Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting on Tuesday, April 9th, 2013. Let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I'd like to welcome anyone from the public who would like to speak this evening. Is there anyone from the public? If you could just state your name and address for us.
Laura La Boy, 438 South Street. I didn't prepare. I mean, this is a last minute thing. This morning, my child was pushed again in school. I feel that this is not the first time, and for some reason, our children are not safe. You guys assured me the last time when my kid came home with a concussion that this wouldn't happen again. I don't know where else to turn to. I have gone to the superintendent. I have spoke with Mr. DePonte. The child was removed. But, the problem is, when this child comes back, it's gonna happen again. I was just at Henry Street Park, and there was four kids after my son. So, what happens tomorrow? I am looking at alternative schooling. I mean, until you guys can put something in place, I don't know. Maybe we should bring back this group that we had before going off into detention centers and showing these kids that are getting in trouble what's gonna happen. It's not safe for our kids here. So, I don't know what else to say to you guys, but, you know, it's gonna cost you a lot more to put this other program back in place than to pay for my children to be out of school choice again. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public this evening who'd like to speak?
Hello. Jill Congdon, 298 High Street, speaking on behalf of the PTA. I just wanted to say that the PTA will be holding their annual father-daughter dance on Thursday, April 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Charlton Street School in the Cafeteria Gym area. Pictures will start at 5:00 o'clock, done by Southbridge Photo, Judy Ferguson. So, the pictures will start at 5:00 o'clock, and the dance will start at 6:00. This includes fathers and daughters, or any special adult male that any children pre-K through 5 have in their lives, uncles, grandparents, or special adult male. Tickets are $5 a person. There will be snack packs available for $3. That include a water, popcorn, and fruit snack. In the snack packs, we'll also be doing a raffle at that time for some special raffle prizes of baskets for the young ladies. And, we will also have the snack packs, the raffle, and Mr. Lab will be DJing from West Street School, so it'll be a real fun time for all the fathers and daughters of the school district. So, we're hoping everyone will come out and attend. We're still looking for volunteers to help with that event. They can email us at southbridgepta@gmail for anyone who's interested in helping with the event. And, I'd also like to say, on behalf of the Southbridge Elementary Arts Initiative, we will be doing Time to Shine Talent Show auditions on Thursday, April 25th, from 3:30 to 5:30. And, this includes anybody who would like to audition for the talent show from grades K through 5 in the Southbridge Schools. The auditions will be held in the old Southbridge High School auditorium. And, registration for auditions are due by April 11th, and forms can be collected in all of the school offices. The Time to Shine event will be held Friday, May 17th, at 7:00. So, everyone mark your calendars for this event. It will also be held at the old Southbridge High School auditorium. The admission is $10 for adults and $5 for children, 12 and under to come to this event. Also at this event, we will be having members of the Southbridge School who have gone through the elementary and high schools in Southbridge and have done something in the arts. So, Brian Kearsley, who graduated in the class of 1995, will be emceeing the event, but also explaining how he has gone through the Southbridge Schools and where he is today, and how the arts have helped him become a musician in his lifestyle. As well as some other local artists, Jason Boucher, who's an artist, will be drawing, and we'll have a clip on him and how he's gone through the Southbridge Schools and where he is today. Amongst some other people, Karen Cotton and Tina Gagnon, who were dancers and own Spotlight Dance Academy, will also be explaining how they went through the Southbridge Schools and danced professionally and now own a dance studio. So, it'll be quite an event. So, everyone mark your calendars for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone else this evening?
Good evening. Rosalie Salamro, 689 Charlton Street. I just wanted to let you know that I do hear awful stories, at least on a weekly basis, about fights, harassment, and kids just being disrespectful at the middle high school. I feel for the teachers. I feel for the administration. I really do. These kids need to be punished, and something needs to be done. What I don't agree with, though, is the punishment of good, respectful students that have nothing, that have done nothing because of some other kids. Other kids being punks. That's right. I said it. Punks. Enough of the sugarcoat in the situation. I understand that these educators are at the maximum level of stress. It's not fair to them. They did not sign up for this. But, don't take it out on the few good kids that you do have. Today at the 6th grade lunch, to my understanding, there was a handful of kids misbehaving. The administration told them to be quiet, or everyone would get detention. Being the well-behaved kids that they are, they continued, and therefore, about a half a dozen tables were given after school detention. Sorry, but that's not fair. My son happened to be at one of those tables, and has never been disrespectful in any way, as I'm sure more than half of those students at those tables are. A three-hour detention for doing nothing. He went up to the administration immediately to plead his innocence to be ignored. All day, he was stressed out, because I care what happens when he comes home. I made a phone call around 11:00 o'clock and did not receive a phone call back. I guess around 2:10, certain kids were told they would not have to go to detention, but they needed to sit at a different table. Fine. I get it. You need to do what you need to do. All I ask is, please, don't start punishing the bunch because of a few rotten apples. If they're gonna be good students and respect you as educators, please do the same for them, because if not, then they won't respect you. Thank you.
Anyone else this evening? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on and call the meeting to order. We have a roll call, please.
Dr. Domingo.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mr. Lozlo.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Dr. O'Leary.
Present.
Mrs. Principe.
Present.
Mrs. Woodruff.
Present.
Seventh present.
Thank you. Next, we'll have the approval of the minutes of the regular school committee meeting, March 26th, 2013. Do I have a motion?
So, move.
I have a motion by Mrs. Principe, as seconded by Dr. Domingo. Is there any errors or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor? Did you get that, Max? All of us in favor? Thank you. Motion, minutes passed. Next, we have chairwoman's announcements. This evening, I am going to move something up that's later on in our vote section. We have a bit of a long presentation, and I would not like these individuals to have to wait for that. So, this evening, I'd like to bring to the podium Ms. Helen Santilli and a few other individuals from the 1917 to 1961 Mary E. Wells Coal Trade High School alumni. Please come to the podium, state your name, and if you could, explain what's going on here.
Helen Santilli and Richard General. We are alumni of Mary E. Wells High School, and we would, the Mary Wells High School, Coal Trade High School, we're gonna add Coal Trade because they came to our classes and they played on our sports teams. We are presenting a check for $3,000, and we would like it used for granite benches to enhance the front entrance to the high school.
Thank you.
Mrs. Woodruff, would you come up, please, and Mr. Numbercock?
I'd be present if you would, Danny.
Thank you very much.
There's two checks, and they're total of $3,000.
Thank you very, very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you very much. Nice to meet both. Thank you.
When we get benches, we'll invite you back, and we'll take a picture and put it into the school, okay? And any other members of your class that you would like to visit, that'd be great. You know, that would be a nice gesture, okay?
Thank you very much for that donation. And, as Mr. Numbercock had said up there, when we do have those benches installed, we'd like to have all the alumni who's available come up, and we'll take a nice, big group picture for that donation that you've given us. So, thank you very much. Next on our agenda, our report of our representative of Student Advisory Committee. Tonight, we have Rosa Bretta. Bretto, excuse me.
Brito.
Brito. I got that straight eventually. She will be our new representative for next year, correct?
Yeah.
So, tonight's her first night. So, welcome.
Good evening. So, my name is Rosa, and Faith is obviously not here today. She had to go to our college, so please excuse her. And, I will be representing her. So, I have a few announcements that are going on in the high school. So, let me start by congratulating the band, for they got a bronze medal at the MICA competition. It was the first time they went, and we should all feel very proud of them. Let me remind you that this Friday, there's gonna be a half-day. So, parents, be aware of that. Check your children. Make sure they get there on time. This Thursday is the annual Southbridge High School Ball. So, please come and join us. It will be a lot of fun. Let me see what else. A reminder for the seniors and juniors is, the prom is gonna be May 3rd, and the next day is SAT. So, rest, rest, and get lots of rest. Let's pass that test. I will also want to invite everyone present here today and everyone in the community. ASPIDA will have a volleyball tournament on Friday at the old high school. It will start at 5:00. Tickets will be sold at the door, if you can't find a representative to sell you one. And, that will be from 5:00 to 8:00. And, yep, that's it. It was a pleasure, and thank you.
Thank you, Rosa. Moving on, we have school committee reports. First one, Curriculum Subcommittee. Mrs. Donovan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have a report, however, I have hosted a meeting for Monday, April 22nd, 2013, at 7:00 p.m. in Room M100 at 25 Col Ave. There are three items that I put on the agenda. The first is to review the Southbridge Public Schools curriculum. We're working on reviewing, doing a whole curriculum review, so that'll be first on the agenda. Second on the agenda is looking at proposed administrative restructuring at the Southbridge Middle High School. And, third of all, we are pleased to be preparing to embark on a new program in the district with our Southbridge Retired Teachers Association, a mentoring program. So, I also wanna discuss that. So, those will be our three agenda items. And, again, the meeting is at 7:00 p.m. on Monday, April 22nd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Donovan. Next, we have Policy Subcommittee. Mrs. Principe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a meeting tomorrow, that is, the 10th of April, at 9:00 a.m., 25 Col Ave, Room M100. And, we will continue, we're continuing our discussion on the community use of school facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Budget Facilities and Transportation. Dr. Domingo?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The meeting was held today at 6:00, just before this meeting, where the Subcommittee voted the Superintendent's recommendation for the upcoming 2013-2014 budget, and we're gonna have a presentation on that shortly. Thank you. No meeting scheduled.
Thank you. Collective Bargaining Subcommittee, Mrs. Principe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe we will resume. I'm not sure. I have to speak with the representatives and the teachers' union, but I believe we will resume collective bargaining on May 8th. I'll keep you posted. Thank you.
Thank you. And last, Communications Family and Community Engagement. Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Meeting was held last night in the Administrative Building on Colle Avenue. A portion of that meeting addressed the parent forums that were held earlier this year. We've comprised the raw data and a summary report, have given that to the Superintendent, who will be sharing that with the district leadership team. And, we will be presenting that to the public in the very near future, and making that report available also online.
Thank you. Moving on, we have Report of the Superintendent.
Yes. First, recognizing the outstanding young students we had, I had the pleasure of being the keynote speaker last week at the induction for the National Honor Society. And, we inducted eight young ladies as new scholars, and it was an excellent evening. And, my only wish was there were more parents and community members there, because these young people, who are academic scholars and our stars, need to be recognized as much as our athletes and other people that perform. So, in today's paper, there was a picture of them. And, one ethnic note was eight young Latino ladies. I think that speaks really well for this community's integration of all people, and recognizing it, and so on. So, that was, I think, a real landmark for the town of Southbridge. I think that deserves Second, two more mundane things. A revision to the school calendar for the spring vacation due to Easter falling at the same time. So, recommendation is to have Good Friday, and then the following week of Patriots Day. And, so, I recommend that the school committee accept that. And now, for the fun part of the evening. I know everybody's been waiting for the Superintendent's recommended budget presentation. And, so, we've arranged this a little bit differently. I've taken this opportunity to really use the technology we have today, and the many people that are home watching it, to talk about the affairs of the school system, look at where we are, look at where we wanna go to, and then try to align that with the resources to ensure that we have, and we can accomplish our goals. So, we're going to change it a little bit. I'm gonna sit up there with Amy Allen, who is going to work the computer there next to me. And then, I'm gonna ask members of the district leadership team, who are our principals, our supervisors, our coordinators, to sit behind me, because I think it's important that the community also recognize these people who work long and hard for the benefit of the kids, and also to see the faces that they often see with their names. And, also, many members of our faculty and staff are here this evening. I wanna thank them for coming, because this budget represents the priorities that they established, and the priorities they established. Hopefully, funded, it'll become a reality. So, I invite our team to step forward, and I will join them. If I had a portable mic, I was gonna play opera and pass it around, so they can all introduce themselves. But, I think that they're here, and they're serving the important purpose of backing me up as a Superintendent, because it's never a one-person job. So, what we have first is fiscal year 2014, the Superintendent's proposed budget. Just so people understand how this works, is that as a Superintendent, my job is to work with the entire staff, and then develop what's called a Needs-Based Budget. This is proposed to the school committee. The school committee will now have it. They will have time to review it, and then say that these additions, changes, adjustments need to be made. And then, I will present a revised version next, in two weeks, on the 23rd. And then, there'll be a public meeting, a public hearing in the first part of that. And then, the school committee can vote, or not to, to accept that budget. If the vote is positive, then that becomes a school committee accepted budget for fiscal year 2014, and that goes to the town for discussion and revision. I think that the presentation this year will be substantially different than what's been done in the past, because it's my opportunity, with the help of the staff, that we have to talk about the Southbridge Public Schools, not just look at numbers, look at the programs that we have, the issues that we have, the challenges that we have, and the successes that we have, all in the course of the next 20 minutes or so. So, the first question I asked was, how did we get here? And if you look at 2012 and 2013, and all of you know better than me, this was one of the most interesting years in the history of Southbridge, and also in education here. You opened up a brand-new, state-of-the-art middle high school for grades 6 through 12. You reconfigured and redistricted the three elementary schools, all new busing routes, all new attendance zones, new principal at West, new principal at the middle high school, two new APs at the middle, new high school, new curriculum director, new math director, new LL director, new director pupil personnel services. And, I'm the third Superintendent you've had since September. And if that wasn't enough to create interesting times, as they say, we negotiated and implemented a new educator evaluation system that was mandated by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to be eligible for the Race to the Top Ballers, implemented a Common Core standards for math and literacy, created a standards-based curriculum units and common assessments for ELA in math, K through 12, began the implementation of PBIS, which I never remember what it is, but it's...
Positive Behavior Intervention.
What?
Positive Behavior Intervention.
Positive Behavior Intervention System. I keep forgetting the positive. I keep, I just focus on the behavior. And, it's working out quite well. That's where it's been implemented elementary. We hope to move it on to the middle high school in the near future. We've trained instructional and data coaches, because the state has required Southbridge as a Level 4 low-performing school districts to use data and report to them on a regular basis. We've developed school-based support teams, building leadership teams, new district leadership team, and an enhanced district data team. And then, the state monitors us monthly and daily with a plan manager and a plan monitor that meets with us on a regular basis, and they report to the school committee on a quarterly basis. And then, we had to develop an intense, and involved, and detailed accelerated improvement plan that creates what we do. And, obviously, one of the questions you ask is, why does it cost more to educate a student in Southbridge? And, I think that's important, because when people look at per-pupil expenditures in the neighboring communities, they find that it's less. And they say, well, why does it cost more in Southbridge? I think it's important that you look at the population. You look at the changes that have occurred in the demographics of this community, and we only chose to use the last 10 years. So, just look at limited English proficient that's SLEP in 2003. It was 5% of the population. You go over to the right, it doubled. It is now 10% of the population. The low income, and that had a larger, much larger growth. In 2003, it was about 50%. In 2013, more than 70%. That is a huge increase in low-income population. The special ed population has stayed about the same. It's hovered about 17%, 18%. But, what has changed is that OODD number. We like that. We say OODD. It's out-of-district placement. These are the students, because of lack of programming here, or highly specialized needs, whether they be medical, or a host of other disabilities, we have to educate, by law, at local expense, at a specialized setting. Then, we also wanted to look at stability rates. What does that mean? It's a lot of interesting numbers, and pictures, and so on. Well, one of the issues in education is when you have a highly mobile student population, it is distracting for everyone, students, educators, the community, and so on. And if you look at those charts, ALL means ALL. That's not an acronym. ELL is English Language Learners. SPED is Special Education, and then it's Low Income. And if you look at the chart there, our ELL population has a churn rate of about 15% or 16%. That means every school year, 15%, 16%, 17%, 17% of our limited English proficient students come and go. Creates a disruption, creates extra need, creates issues for everyone. Not only that's those students that move back and forth between school districts, but also, more importantly, to the school system. We have to provide specialized programs, specialized activities, specialized teachers. So, when you say, how different are we? So, we thought we'd just take a look at the communities around here. Southbridge has Webster, Clinton, and Oxford. I've only been in Southbridge. I hope to get to Clinton eventually. And my goal in my bucket list is Oxford. Supposed to be funny, folks. And I think the important thing to look at is, we're 2,270 students. We're the largest of those three like districts. Our SPED population is, you know, varies based upon proportionality. But, look at the number of second language learners that we have. We have 258. Webster has 58. Clinton has a higher number of 144. And Oxford has an astounding six English language learners. So, you think about how that affects a classroom, how that affects what happens in the classroom, how it affects all the dynamics when students come and go and don't speak the language, how it creates additional difficulty. So, I think that's a very important thing to look at. And our low-income students are considerably higher than the others. So, when you look at these numbers, and you look at our why it costs more, one of the things that I said earlier was special needs. And when we send a student out of district, it can range from a low figure of $25,000 a year, a project RISE, which is a local program, to over $200,000 a year. to over $200,000 a year at the New England Center for Children. And that's the low to high. And we have a number of students who are residential settings that cost us well over $100,000 a year. And that doesn't include transportation. And that's a local funding, so on. So we have a very high out-of-district cost. If you look at FY13, we spent 1.647 million. And then we're anticipating an increase of over $200,000 for FY14 of out-of-district SED requests. And then you gotta remember that if a student moves in any time of the year, we are required in their IAP to meet that. And then we may have to send that student out of district at a very high cost, not only in tuition, but also in services and transportation. So when you look at that, and you look at that cost going up, it becomes incumbent upon the school system to say, how can we bring some of those students back? It's more realistic to say, how can we keep the students that we have from going out of district? Bringing them back is difficult for lots of different reasons. We'll talk about that later. But I think Southbridge needs to be planning more effectively for in-district programs to keep our students. So we need to save about 1.4 million, and so we need to add staff, programs, and transportation. So we're proposing, and this is again a draft, clearly educational support programs. And we're looking at behavior specialists and clinicians. You heard a couple of parents speak earlier, and they were concerned about their children, rightfully so. So we have to look at, how do we create programs in behavior modification? How do we create in-district programs? Because it's not fair to take a student because of behavior issues and then put him on a van and ship him out of town. When his friends, his neighbors, and the people he'll be interacting with are here locally. So it makes not only financial sense, but also good educational and social sense to keep as many students as you can in the district. As we develop the PBIS program, as we develop our behavior programs, obviously, the secondary school is one of major concern because you have a 6th grade, well, 6th through 12th. And a whole lot of difference between an 11-year-old and a 20-year-old in grade 12, an 11-year-old entering grade 6. So we have to be cognizant of that. As you know, about a month or so ago, we changed the entry and egress processes. The building is now being used as it was originally designed. Still more works need to be done. The middle-school students are on their side, the high-school students on their side. And next year, we have even more plans to create better organizational structure that will meet the needs of the middle-school students and the high-school students, age-appropriate. And I think that's in developmentally appropriate programs. So when we look at SED, what our needs are for the future, again, adjustment counselors, we don't have any. Okay? And when you're talking about a high-low-income population, we're talking about a high ELL population, and we're talking about a high SED. And not all of them are severe. We need the adjustment counselors that would be working. We need to increase school psychologists, the district coordinator for all of this, and so on. And we're looking at, very importantly, looking at how we provide SED services to the community. It's been one of the sore spots in the community, and rightfully so. And so we need to be very careful of how we restructure the organization to better meet the needs of the SED students and the regular ed students. And then there's a whole issue of transportation. When you open the new middle school in, I think it's in Oxford. I know it's not in Southbridge, because you gotta drive about 50 miles to get there. And so you went from centrally-located Cole Avenue, and you moved them all out there. So every student, virtually every student, needs to be bussed. And once they're there, they can't cut, so that works out pretty well too. So there's a plus side to that. And we also have two late bus routes. We have two buses in there right after school, about 3:30, and then one athletic after 5 o'clock. And then the reconfiguration and redistrict of the elementary school. We have additional transportation costs. And any student grade 1 through 5, mile away, and more than a half for older students, they'll be bussed. So the additional busing costs occurred this year. And when we start looking at all this, you have to look at this as just a chart. In-district transportation costs in 2010 was about $600 per student. And then in the last two years, it's moved up to almost $1,000 per student. So that's a huge increase. And we have to look at how we can assess, address, and maintain, and slow down the increase in transportation. Here's a figure that gives our pupil personnel director a little bit of agita. That's Italian for those of you that don't know. Special education costs for transportation for about 17% of our students, right? It costs more than the other 80-some percent that we have. And that's $1.3 million for SED, and then $1.1 million for everybody else. So that's a huge chunk of change that has to be looked at very, very carefully in this coming year. Again, as we look at the changes in the population, self-explanatory. The Hispanic population here has gone from about 35%, and every year, it's increased. And this year, it dropped a little bit. So over 40% of our students are Hispanic background. And so as we provide ELL services, and the state also has added additional requirements for us to have sheltered English immersion, all teachers have to be trained. So we're gonna have an additional cost that's not gonna go away. So we have to look at better ways of developing and presenting our services to second-language students. So the current staffing that we have, which we don't intend to change too much in the budget, is up there, a couple of teachers at CSS, three at West, one full-time at middle school, two tutors, and then four paras and one full-time at the high school. So when you look at the 10 years or so that the school system has been labeled underperforming and chronically underperforming, you'll see that AYP, that's something everybody's been heard on a regular basis from 2004 to 2012. Yet there's one aberration in the middle. None of us have an explanation for in 2009, when everybody made AYP, including all subgroups. We find that statistically hard to understand. So, but if you go back again, I think I wanna focus just a little bit on that. All right. We have technical difficulties with this computer, just, you know, so on. But that was one thing that I saw yesterday for the first time that stuck out in my mind, that that is a huge aberration. And at that same time, when you look at the graduation rates over the four years, the cohort grade rate means that incoming ninth graders, how many came in in grade 9, and then four years later, how many graduated? So if you look at '08, '07, '08, 119 students. And out of that, the graduation rate was 64%. '08, '09, when that aberration was there, where everybody passed, the graduation rate was even lower, 57%. And it's increased in the last two years that we have the data for. Again, this is substantially lower than the state average. The state average is considerably higher. I worked in Brockton, and the population we had in Brockton when I was superintendent has similar low-income rates, but a substantially higher minority rate and a substantially higher ELL rate. And yet our graduation was in the high 80s, one of the highest in the state. And that was because we focused on working with all of students and tried to develop programs that met the needs of us. So that's one of the things we wanna do here. We didn't break out, and we will in a later presentation in the spring when we look at planning for next year, we'll break them out by subgroups and show you what the actual rates are. So 69% folks is completely unacceptable in today's economy. And if you say, many of you have been, we had no choice but to see programs and listen to radio and read the paper when they talk about the income gap between a high-school dropout versus a college graduate. Not only is it a huge difference in the millions of dollars of future earnings, but what's even more interesting are societal costs for high-school dropouts. The cost of medical care, because they typically have a job that doesn't provide insurance. So that becomes an issue to the community. The issue of getting social services is high. And the one thing that astounded me was when I looked at these statistics comparing education levels and accomplishment was the rate of marriage. And if you're a high-school dropout, the likelihood of you being married is considerably less than a college graduate. And then when you think about it, that's an interesting little thing. Then you say that some of the women are pretty smart. They're not gonna marry someone that's not gonna be able to provide for them on a long-term basis. It makes perfect sense. And so that creates families that are not nuclear, and it creates other societal costs. So when you start looking at gaps between educational attainment, it is not only dollars and cents, but the societal costs, not only in medical services, social services, but also in the family, family issues, and so on. So I think that's often overlooked, but I found that to be one that I spent quite a bit of time looking at because it just struck me as an outlier. But 69% completely unacceptable in today's world. And those jobs that were here 50 years ago, for those that didn't graduate, could've gotten a good job in the mill, or in the other industries and so on. But today, they're virtually shut out. The only area they have would be lower-paying service jobs. So it becomes critical for this community, if it's gonna prosper and be successful, is to work on dropout prevention programs, provide alternatives, and so those students can be more successful. So that was an interesting statistic when we looked at it. We've developed a host of curricular additions that we're going to look at. And one of the things that Amy, sitting next to me, has been working on is the program of studies at the high-school level. We don't offer enough electives. We don't offer enough programs that will be able to graduate students that are at the language that the state and uses now is college or career-ready. Work-ready. We want kids to be work-ready. And so they have to have the necessary skills. And so we're looking at expanding some of our STEM programs, that's science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And we're looking at restructuring how we offer the courses. And we'll talk more about that in a minute. But when you said looking at SAT preparation courses within the day, rather than making it an add-on, we want kids to take the college boards. We want kids to take ACT tests and so on. And we have to provide programs within their day, rather than, say, it's after school, making it a hindrance. So you did a lot of these things well a few years ago, they just got away from it. So we need to go back to those things that the Southbridge did well. And I think that, so you can switch a little bit further, I'll come back to this. Go to the restructuring one. Okay. So as we're looking for more dollars, and I'll close with that in a little bit, is that since the state requires, we require, and if you're talking about differentiated instruction, if you're talking about different kinds of students in your classroom, and you wanna be able to teach them at where they are, you gotta know where they are. And how do you know that? If you don't have data, it becomes meaningless. So we have data coaches. We're looking at organizing that and then developing a plan that every adult in the Southbridge Public Schools is data-literate. And knows how to use that data, manipulate that data for the benefit of the student. Not to provide just numbers to the state or me, for the benefit of the student. And one of the things we will be working on is developing, with Julie back here and so on, is a better organization and dissemination to the community of where we are, where the kids are. And I think that what I wanna see is a dashboard in a little while, so parents can go out and see where the school is, where their kids are in relation to other places. The school committee needs different kinds of data. Superintendent's office needs different kind, teacher needs different kind of data. So this is what we're gonna work on. This is a long-term plan. The second one is what we wanna talk about a little bit more, and we'll have another slide of restructuring. But the true middle-school concept, and what does that mean? There's lots of middle schools in this country. And they say we're implementing a middle-school concept. And yet they create the four core teachers, and they give each one of their 45 to 50 minutes. They ring a bell, and the kid goes from class to class to class. That's not what a middle-school concept was meant to be. The middle-school concept was that four core teachers, science, math, social studies, and ELA, work together as a team. And our plan is to also add a SED teacher to that team. And they plan around the needs of the kids, the strengths of the kids. And it becomes truly interdisciplinary. They control their schedule. They wanna work on a unit in science, and the other three teachers work with them. That's what they do. It isn't time-bound. Right now, we have a wonderful process where we ring bells. And then we move hundreds of kids from place to place to place every 45 or 50 minutes. It really worked well at the turn of the century because you were trying to create efficiencies. You created discrete subjects, and you wanted the factory mentality. Doesn't work that way today. We're talking about a whole host of different skills, soft skills, that will allow you to be successful in the 21st century. And it's timeliness is not necessarily godliness. So you think about the day you went to, you ring a bell, boom. You got more trouble for being late than for not doing your homework. I see some of you chuckling, and that's what happens, okay? So I think the focus is in the wrong place. By empowering teachers with their teams to be responsible for that group, it'll create the stability, it'll create that necessary adult-student relationship. And it'll also make discipline better in the schools. So the kids running in the halls every seven times a day. Think about that, right? When do kids get in trouble in school? Cafeteria, in the hall, and in the bathroom. If you find ways of dealing with that, and one of the things is that middle-school concept will do that. And then teachers, and so on, we're looking at team leaders for each one of those teams. And so they will be able to deal with that in a flexible manner. Just, I always use this example, is as an adult, think about how you would function if you had seven different bosses a day. Every 45 minutes, you had a different demand. Think about it. Right? You went to Mr. Jones in math, Ms. Smith in science, this and that. And you take a 12-year-old, stick him in that position, and say, "function." The kid with the little Franklin planner will do fine. But the others are gonna have a little adjustment issue, so we're looking at that. Electives again, and then the freshman academy that you had needs to be looked at and reinstituted again to create a true team. We look at the freshman academy, and we may have different opinion. This is, again, a works in progress, is who needs to be in the freshman academy, and what do they need? And what kind of teachers do they need for them to be successful? And how much movement do you actually need? So we're looking at administration. You'll see a chart on that in a second. And then all of, and then central office, and all of the roles of the supervisors, instructional people. Our plan, we're gonna present, after the budget gets implemented, the school committee for review and discussion will be a dramatic restructuring of what Southbridge Public Schools looks like. So here it is. Hope you're all holding your breath. You can get excited about it. Because currently what we have is, and you've had this forever, is subject area specialists. And the subject area specialists were primarily in the English-language arts, and math, and maybe in the ELL, and so on. But what about the other subjects? They didn't exist, so there was that gap. We looked at that as one of the issues. So we said, what would make the best sense at Southbridge Middle High School? So our proposal is, we thought out of the box, is that obviously one principal. And then we have two assistant principals, one each for the high school, and one... then we have two assistant principals, one each for the, um, high school and one, uh, for the middle school, six-eight. And then when we're talking about an educational unit, we need someone that's in charge of academics. And so we're proposing an academic and dean that will be able to work with the principal and so on. And then, uh, looking at, um, at the propos, uh, what we currently have, I said, most of our teachers know the curriculum extremely well. We've, uh, aligned and realigned the curriculum about fifty thousand times in my career. We don't need more of that. What we need is ensure that, that the new educational program, uh, changes are made in the classroom, so, and so on. How do we ensure that that occurs and helps? So we're proposing a director of elementary education, director of middle school education, and director of high school education. And when I went to the high school, when I first came here in, um, in January, I had a wonderful conversation about scheduling and so on, and I thought all the departments were, were there. So I asked them, and I walked over to the music department, and I said, "Did you guys like my scheduling conversation?" They said, "We weren't there." And I said, "Why?" "Well, there's only four department heads, math, English, science, and social studies." "And how about everybody else?" "Well, they're not represented." So I said, "That leads to part of the problem, which is lack of communication, or poor communication. So we've got to figure out ways we can increase, uh, the ability to communicate." And then one area that wasn't, that was, was completely overlooked is, uh, is high school and middle school guidance. It's, uh, reports to the director of people personnel services, it'll still continue to, but, but for line, uh, authority, it, uh, we would look at the directors of education. And what will they do? Uh, it's one of the things that we're looking at, is they will work very closely with the principals, with, uh, various, uh, teachers, the various programs, to ensure a consistency of purpose, a consistency of, uh, focus, and, and quality programming and, and teaching. That's, that's what we're looking for. We're not looking for, um, uh, here's a new curriculum for this, at this particular level. We've done enough of that. We, the state has done it for us, called the frameworks. So, so, and, and again, the, all of this, it's not going to cost any more money than what we currently do, because we're going to eliminate the English, uh, Language Arts, the math, the ELL, and then, and then, and then, um, embed it in the particular areas. We already have, uh, three assistant principals, so we just redirect what they do. And then the addition of, uh, of supervision of our guidance just becomes an additional responsibility. So it's a, it's a no cost, virtually no cost. It's actually cost-saving, a thirty-four thousand dollars, because we looked at the actual salaries. We expect to get cheaper people. New, new people, okay? I've just been, I've just been a wise guy. It's a long night, it's been a long day, and so on, so I think that without a sense of humor, you couldn't work with kids all day, and without a better sense of humor, I couldn't work with all some of you adults all day. Moving on, yeah. So that's really the, the story I wanted to tell. What I wanted to say was, hey, look at Southbridge Public Schools. And people like to complain and criticize, but you just think of the changes the school system went through in the last couple of years, and they still functioned. And that's because of an awful lot of good, hard-working, concerned people. Teachers, administrators, custodians, cafeteria workers, all of these people that come in, work hard and so on, and they've been through a lot. You have totally revamped your entire school system in one year. You created a middle-high school, you took the organization that you had with different grade levels, created two-one-through-fives, and created a K and pre-K. In one fell swoop, and you did a pretty good job. Did you have hiccups and problems along the way? Of course you did. But sometimes you don't give yourself enough credit for accomplishing a major thing. I've worked in other school districts, and I know other schools that would spend three years arguing over changing the, the bus routes, and if they were going to reconfigure, uh, some of the elementary schools and attendance zones. It takes a lot. You guys did it, so you've got to give yourself a little pat on the back every now and then that you accomplished. And you, and you've got a beautiful, state-of-the-art middle-high school in Oxford, but that's another issue. And so on. So that's one of the things I want to say, that there was a lot of good people, putting in a lot of time and effort, and, 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 and sometimes, in our criticism of, and, and focus on negativity, uh, we tend, we tend to forget that. The second thing that I think is important for the community to know and everybody to know is that there's been a huge demographic change. We showed you the data. And, and yet, uh, there hasn't been any change in the way you organize yourself to teach, okay? The population changed, the students come from all over the place with different needs, and yet we kept the same old structure in place. I always joke about the classical definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over again and expecting different results. And so we had to propose a radical departure from the existing structure, otherwise we weren't going to get anywhere. All we could do is blame each other. And I think almost all of you have heard, uh, my favorite, um, organizational guru, W. Edwards Deming, and I quote him all the time. And, and one of the things I learned in my study was that, um, too often we blame people when it's really the organizational structure that's at fault. And I think that some of the issues that you created were organizational, and a huge turnover of personnel. I mean, I'm, I'm surprised some of you are still smiling at, and so on. And then, and hopefully now, one of my functions in the next year and a couple of months that I'll be here, is to work with the great staff that I have sitting behind me, those that are in front of me and so on, and, and create a structure that is student-centered, student-oriented, and, and, and that'll outlast individuals. That's, that's the goal. And all this costs money. So the town's appropriation in FY thirteen was twenty-three million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand and change. This year, they want to appropriate, uh, twenty-four million, uh, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand. So the difference is a million dollars more, so they're proposing a four-point-two percent increase. As I said to you, the superintendent's proposed budget is a needs-based budget. I'm proposing a budget that we're saying, this is how much money we need in order to be able to accomplish the, the challenging and difficult task of educating this extremely diverse population with high need for the twenty-first century. We can't do it on, uh, uh, less dollars. So my, our proposal here is a five-point-nine-eight percent increase of twenty-five million, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. That is the superintendent's recommended needs-based budget. Initially, I didn't show you, was that I asked all of the schools to send me what they wanted, what they thought they needed. And what they proposed was a ten percent budget. And so we, as a team, sat and looked at and pared it down to five-point-nine-eight percent budget. Now, uh, the other thing you have to recognize in the Chapter Seventy funds, which the governor proposed, because of the high need that was, uh, that was, um, shown, uh, for Southbridge with the high ELL population, the high poverty population, and the increase of about seventy-some new students, that's, you've, you've had more new students come back in. Uh, ninth, ninth highest Chapter Seventy allocation for the state, about one-point-six million dollars was what, it's in the governor's budget. So whether that becomes a reality or not is, is up to the vagaries of, um, of the, of Boston. So my recommendation of five-point-nine-eight percent, and all the years I've been the superintendent, that's the smallest recommendation I ever made, by the way, percentage-wise. And now, uh, it's up to the school committee now to review this, uh, come back to me with, uh, with, uh, what they feel, and, and they will obviously meet with, uh, with the, the town council and the town manager, as I will, and, and then we'll have a conversation, and then my recommendation will more than likely change. And I, and being a realist that I am, actually, I'm an optimist, but, uh, I don't envision my budget being increased. So there'll be some more pairing that has to be done. But it's not going to be done by me, by myself, it's going to be done by the team. Everything I've done so far, and I think that's really important for people to know, is that Buzz Nembrecourt does not make a decision by himself. He always brings it back to the people, and we have the district leadership team behind me, and every Tuesday morning for a couple hours, we all sit down and meet, and I tell them very simply that if it, if I don't hear it on the table, right? If you don't put it there, I'm not going to act on it. Don't say to me, "Buzz, can I talk to you privately, make a little deal on the side?" Don't work that way. I learned a long time ago that transparency is the key, and if you see the school committee, everything that I ask, that I do, I present copies of it to everybody. This is a draft. And the other thing I learned a long time ago is, I, you know, even though we, twelve of us or fourteen of us sat here and worked on this, hey, we might have missed something. You guys got some better ideas, some different suggestions, some good idea, we're, we're, we're ready to hear it. I'm, I'm very open to that. I think I demonstrated that with, uh, the various meetings I've had with, uh, the stakeholders in this community. So that's my recommendation of twenty-five million, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. And, uh, all of you that live here and everything else, you have to make a decision, is this an appropriate sum to improve what we have, and how can I work to make sure that we get the necessary dollars, uh, to, to accomplish that? As we showed you, that we're not outrageously higher than the surrounding communities, but we got much greater need. And I'll say that again, we have much greater need, and we have to organize ourselves smarter so we can accomplish a, that. The other thing is, I want to compliment all of the teachers, all of the staff that we have over here, to work in an urban district. Southbridge is a small town, but it's an urban district. It's harder. It's a whole lot easier to go to surrounding suburbs, deal with a, a less diverse population, less needy, and, and accomplish what you want. But I, I want to thank all of you and compliment you all, because this is the most satisfying thing you can do, working with this population. You're making a contribution, not only to make Southbridge better, but the whole Commonwealth and country better, because we have, because your job is harder. Easier to cut and run. Easier to cut and run. But these are the people that need you. I could have left in June. I originally only came to state six months. And I didn't get suckered. I actually, the decision the school committee worked was, was I saw the need, and it, it makes me feel better. I actually like the fact that I came out of retirement, and if I can help with all of your support, uh, I'm going to go back and, a couple of good karma points for me, I'm Buddhist. Okay? And I hope, you know, that you, you feel the same way, because obviously you do, you're here, and many of you have been here for, for a long time, that, that Southbridge needs to get off of Level Four. I'm meeting the deputy commissioner, uh, Alan Ingram, and, and, um, Julie, uh, Ms. Foysey, Linda Foysey will be here on, uh, May second, and they'll, and I'll take them over to the middle high school, that's where we'll, we'll spend most of the morning with them. And we discussed, uh, the issue that Mr. Lazar brought up, a very legitimate issue, was, hey, what's the timeline? What's the exit plan to get out of, uh, Level Four? And, and so what we got were kind of ambiguous answers. Well, but we will have the people to make that decision here. You were in my office when I spoke to Ms. Foysey, she says, "Yes, we will, we will work on that." So I want to know, what do we have to do as a system, okay, to move up? And I want a concrete plan. I don't need another accelerated improvement plan that's a hundred-and-fifty pages long that, 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 if you have insomnia, this will be a cure for it. I guar, I guarantee you, okay? It'll cure it, right next to our curriculum guides, right? All right, so that, that's where I am, and I'll turn to the school committee if they have any questions or comments, uh, for me. Thank you for putting up with me and listening to, to me, so you guys can go back.
Is there anyone up here who has any questions? Okay, seeing no questions, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the school committee actions. A, vote to approve a donation in the amount of three thousand dollars for funding to purchase granite benches for the Southbridge Middle High School by the nineteen-seventeen, nineteen-sixty-one Mary E. Wells Coal Trade High School alumni. Do I have a motion?
Second.
I'm sorry, did I hear a second? Dr. O'Leary. So I have a motion by Mrs. Principay, seconded by Dr. O'Leary. Is there any, uh, discussion on that? Seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, the motion passes, and I'm hoping, um, the superintendent, this will be posted on the website. Thank you. Moving on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, we have second readings of three policies. Policy file BDF-A on school councils, school improvement plan policies, that's file BDF-A-A, and school council regulation policy file BDF-A-R. Anything from the policy subcommittee chair?
Yes, thank you. Tonight I gave out, um, two pages, um, minor changes that the, uh, policy subcommittee made. Um, BDF-A-a remains the same. The changes are minor. One was sentence structure, it was a sentence that was kind of unwieldy. The other one is, uh, the meetings will be held once a month, uh, in both the regulations and the policy itself. That would be BDF, BDF-A. It's in bold, and I would, um, like at this time to make a motion to waive the second readings.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Principay to waive all the second readings of these three policies. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dr. Domingo. Any discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you, motion passes. Is there any other unfinished business this evening for many members? Seeing none, we'll move on to new business. The next regular school committee meeting will be held on April twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, in the council chambers. Is there any other new business this evening? Mr. Lazzo?
Uh, I would just like to ask the chair, or the, uh, through the chair, through the superintendent, we had a couple of parents up here, Ms. LaBoy, and I think Ms. Rose, Alicia Lamro, hit it on the head. Um, I'm getting a tremendous amount of phone calls, uh, from employees, teachers, associates, uh, in reference to their ability to discipline. Let me give you an example, if there's a class of eighteen and one is acting up, they cannot discipline the student if they have an IEP. Is, is that correct in saying that?
You can discipline a student.
Okay. Um, what are we doing as a district? Uh, I know that, um, since we've moved into this new middle-high school, although it's a great facility, we've had more violence in the last nine months than we had in the previous year or two. So, um, what are we doing to, I mean, safety is paramount in a learning environment, that a child is safe in the classroom or in the hallways. Um, what are we doing to assure these parents that their kids are going to be safe? Have we done anything different that we could tell the public to make them feel that we are doing what we have to do to take care of these problems?
Well, I, I think in the elementary schools, we've already had a plan to develop, uh, a, a class for disruptive students that starts there, and we're in the process of, Colleen, you have that information, and we're moving, and we move teachers and so on, we're going to start that, have no additional cost, we're just moving people to do that. Uh, the middle and the high school, I think part of it was, you just got off to a really bad, chaotic start. No rules, no, uh, systems, and, and were implemented, and, and, uh, I met with students yesterday, and they were asking for consistency. I met with teachers afterwards, they were saying the same thing, they want to see the rules and regulations administered as consistently as possible. And I think that's one of the And we're moving, and we move teachers and so on, we're going to start that. Have no additional costs, we're just moving people to do that. The middle and the high school, I think part of it was just got off to a really bad, chaotic start. No rules, no systems and were implemented. And, and I met with students yesterday, and they were asking for consistency. I met with teachers afterwards, they were saying the same thing. They want to see the rules and regulations administered as consistently as possible. And I think that's one of the issues, I think I mentioned over here, you've had tremendous turnover of people, you have so on, and people are working quite hard, but there are some gaps. Yesterday, we went over there, we looked, again, when I looked at bathrooms and so on, that entry level bathroom where some of the issues were, were starting out of the cafeteria, it'll be open in the morning for kids getting off the bus, and it's going to be locked the rest of the day. I couldn't, when I looked at it, you could lock that, I never went inside that bathroom because that's not my typical habit of inspecting bathrooms, but I will. It's, it was a danger right there, just, just the way it was designed. I have, I have yet to see a bathroom in a public school that you could lock from the So you just think about the potential issues that could occur. So that's going to be, that's been addressed. I've been meeting pretty regularly with the staff over there. And obviously, we, we're taking steps to ensure that there are more teachers in the hall, administrators and so on, in the cafeteria, and things like that. But as far as fights go, I don't know, I think with the data, I asked Mr.,
Leach?
I know, Greg, I was going to call him. Mr. Greg, I almost said, Mr. Leach. And, and what do we have? It was, all, all depends what you constitute as a fight, okay? That's, that's the definition and so on. And there have been fights in schools since the beginning of organized, organized time. What's different here? There is a difference, and I, and I've noticed, is that, is that media plays a role into this. Kids videotape things, they put stuff out. And so I had a great conversation about cell phones with the kids yesterday, and that's a pretty good suggestion that I'm going to implement. But a lot of the stuff happens in the, in the hallways, in the cafeterias, in the bathrooms. So we're, we're going to obviously implement more scrutiny and more care and so on. When I, when I looked at other things, the other thing we have is a school resource officer, and we're, we're in the process of discussing that issue, was when I was in school, when you went to school, there were fights there. What was different? You didn't get arrested. And I think that we're too quick to turn things over to the school resource officer. The school resource officer is there as a support to the administration, to the faculty and the teachers. And it was, the conversation we're going to have now is, it's an administrative decision, when and where, and how to involve all of that. I think we react too quickly. And that's, that's been bothering me, because I went home after one incident about a month ago, I saw a few police cars, it was over the scatter and everything else. And I'm a firm believer in rigid discipline, I'll tell you right now. But then I started thinking about it, what's different today? It was a fight with two guys over a girl. I think that Romeo and Juliet, we might go back to Shakespeare in times as far as those kinds of issues, right? And, and there were four, five, three cruisers out there. And the perception was that there was, you know, I thought there was a riot, so I drove right over there. Two kids over a girl. Okay? I think it might have been one or two of those when I was in high school. But it was, the issue was the police presence, the issue of, 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 of arrest possibilities, assault and battery charges, so on. That's, that's the difference. And then when people complain about the school, the prison pipeline, here's a perfect example of it. And I think that, that as a community, and the other issue is that, I take exception when there's violence in the school. If there's violence in the school, there's violence in the community. Most of those issues that I heard about and seen, and I had to directly express, were issues at home or the community that were carried into the school. So I think the community needs to address the issue of violence, and how the community deals with the issue of violence, and what do we do to prevent and work with these students and so on. The school has a very important role to play, there's no question about that. This is where they all come. We have six hours a day, a hundred and eighty days a year. And if you look at six hours a day, a hundred and eighty years, multiply that out, I hope somebody's got a calculator out, it's about less than ten percent or fifteen percent of the twenty-four seven. And so to lay it all on us, I think is, 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 at times, and, and I recognize the importance of safety, the concerns of parents, but again, I'll say is that we're working on it, we've had issues, we've had change in leadership, and a very different change in philosophy from the previous administration regarding, the teachers were telling me yesterday that they send a thing in, they don't know what happens. I said, Mr. Leach, the teachers will now know what happens if we have to institute and go buy a paper that has triplicate form, and one piece goes back to them. So, so they'll feel more comfortable. So it's also a, a community and a school-wide effort to address it in a comprehensive manner. Expelling into the street does nobody any good. You see, so up there, I'm proposing an alternative in school. A place where those, I mean, since biblical times, they've expelled people from the community for not following us. So we've got to create a system in-house that takes, that small percentage of students who cause a majority of the problem, and, and develop a program that makes and meets their needs in school, in town, rather than someplace else.
Just a follow-up question. The previous superintendent took a lot of programs and put it into the new middle high school. Do you feel that the behavioral mods that were brought back into the system, there are kids, we have to provide services, and I understand that, and the offshoot was the Coal Trade Building and programming, where kids that don't want to cause problems, that are going to school playing by the rules, getting proper education, at the same time, we can remove the disruptive student, or as the previous speaker said, the punks that go in and, and create the havoc, that give the system the bad name, and that actually takes away from the average student trying to get an education at Southbridge High. Do we have any plans to remove these programs or remove kids that maybe should have never left the other program grow to begin with?
Well, this is what we're trying to do, I mean, once we get this budget established. I remember, I've been here three and a half months. It seems longer, but, and we're, we're identifying and addressing in a coherent, organized manner. The things that happened this past year were disorganized, not planned well, and that's what created the problem. Programs were moved willy-nilly. Transportation was ignored. People that weren't, in my opinion, the right people for those particular jobs, were just put there. So we're trying to fix that. It's going to take us some time to, to address, organize, and then, like I said, I'll come back in, in May and make a presentation as to what the new organization will look like. I fully expect an alternative program for elementary and secondary school to be in place in the fall, that we'll be able to take those kids and put them, and provide them with the proper support. Again, kicking them out in the street is a vacation, and it creates problems for the community. So that's in the budget, we're going, we're working on that. Where it's located, we don't know yet. Are there programs that probably haven't meshed very well? Yes, there's no question. But we need to, to move carefully. One of the things that I said to you when I came here, when I met you, the whole school committee is, I plan carefully. I don't just jump and do something, and then find out it wasn't well thought out and I have to undo it. My, you know, it's the old Asian in me, spend, waste time upfront, plan carefully, implement and then make it work. Don't jump and, and come up with a solution like that, and then find out you haven't thought it out carefully, then you start spending lots of time fixing it. There's, there's lots of issues that we haven't addressed yet. I mean, special ed being one of those things, we have students there, disruptive and so on, we have to figure out where to put them. Regular ed, we have that. And, and, and again, this is the first time that you've mixed twelve-year-olds and twenty-year-olds. And, and I guarantee you that that's going to have issues. So growing pains, and then, like I said, you've done a lot. And I think to focus just on the negative part and so on, I think Mr. Leach was saying, until last week or so, we had about two fights, and then the last week, we had a spate of them. Okay? That occurred. And it was interesting, it was, it was the young kids. Now, that was the interesting part about it. It wasn't the twelfth graders or eleventh graders, it's more of the, of the younger students, the middle school kids. And, and they need more direct supervision, period. You treat first graders with supervising as a classroom teacher, a whole lot different than you treat eighth graders or twelfth graders. I think we have to rec, and so that's, that's where we're, we're getting to.
Thank you. And Rosa?
Hi. I just wanted to add a few little things to what the superintendent was saying, to what Mr. Lazo was saying. I'm a student in Southbridge High School, and I live it every day, and I know how it works, and I see it from the viewpoint of the student. So it was a rough year, we did start pretty rough, and a lot of the fighting going on when the old principal was there, we were talking, and I told her a few of the things that were going on is because it's a new high school, it's a new middle school, high school. The air is tense, we're not used to this, people are not feeling at home, they're not feeling well, and a lot of the fights are going on just for the fact that they're not home yet, they don't feel there yet. And it's not so much of the fact of them not implementing the rules and the teachers not being there, because I walked down the hallway, and every pod, there's at least two teachers on the hallway checking that everything is fine. A lot of the fights haven't gotten worse because the teachers are there to stop them right when they start. And they're young adults, they should not be having to be supervised every five minutes, walking down a hallway, going to the bathroom, going to the cafeteria. The cafeteria is their time, is their time to talk to each other. So a parent came up, and she used a word that to me is not adequate, which was punk. And it's, if your child is sitting at a table full of punks, which are causing problems, they should be strong enough to walk away from that table so they wouldn't be getting in trouble. If I was a teacher and I was walking by, I see it every day at lunch, I see a whole table of kids talking, they're either helping, they're joining, I'm going to affect the whole table. If I wanted to move away from that table because I feel this problem, I would move away. So it's not just the school, the school can do so much, but it's also the community, parenting, and a lot of things that go in. Yes, there's fighting going on, there's fighting in every single school, there's things that could be done, I agree totally. And I'm sure that teachers, and next year will be a better year, and teachers are working on it, but we need the community, parenting, and school to work together, not just blame it on the school. It's not it. And it's not just rules and what's going on, it's also the new air, new school, tense, changes, every single of these things cause a problem. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosa, thank you very much. Well said. Anyone else for new business? Mrs. Donovan?
Thank you. I had a couple of, two questions and then a comment. My first question, Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Nembroke. I was wondering about the last day of school. I know we've had some snow days, and I didn't know if there's been any change to our existing schedule as to when the last day of school is proposed to be.
Yeah, my law, I'll try again. By law, we're required to have a hundred and eighty days, and we have a hundred and eighty-five day calendar, we have five snow days built in, we went over it by one, so rather than ending on Tuesday, it'll end on the Wednesday the following day, and we'll get a year. And so just, it'll go out on, right after the holiday, after the April vacation, we'll send out notices, we'll send, and we'll put it on the website and everything else, so parents are aware. And they know there was a lot of snow days this year. So it'll be Wednesday.
Okay, thank you very much. My second question is, in the past, historically, as children are getting ready to move up a grade and therefore move to a different school, we've had a special day called Step-Up Day, and I didn't know if the process has begun to plan for that so that our first graders, I'm sorry, that our kindergarten people are able to visit their next school as well as the fifth graders to visit the middle high school.
And that's the benefit of having the leadership team, because they brought it up to me. I wouldn't have thought of that because I wasn't thinking about transitions at this particular time. But we already have plans in the works, they're working with Step-Up Day, so the kindergartners will transition to first grade, fifth graders will visit the high school for sixth grade, and that's about it, I think. So that's, that's in the works, and we'll let the community know, and we'll get the transportation set up so we can, we can have that ready.
Okay, thank you very much. And then just one more question, is just a general notice to the public. In case, if, if you're a parent, you're certainly aware, and hopefully you received the, the letter from Mr. Nembroke that came home this week. But for those of you who are not aware of it, for the first time, the district is going to be working in together with a research company to provide surveys, so that we as a school district can get better feedback on how our schools are doing, teachers, how the teachers are doing to be more transparent. And the, the group that we are going to be working with is called K-12 Insight. And the letter that came home from the superintendent explains that if you really want to have a say in what's going on, and of course, we want everybody to, to participate in this, what you need to do is you need to visit the district website. And if you do not know what the, the web address is, it's www.southbridge.k12 MA.us. And when you get to the main, the main website, you'll see SPS, which stands for Southbridge Public Schools Survey. And what you need to do is first register to become part of the group that will participate in the survey. So if you double-click on SPS Survey, it will ask you your name, your first name and your last name, and a preferred email address that you would like to use for part of the survey. Once you get through that screen, you click Next, the second screen asks you what particular schools you are affiliated with relative to what schools your children are at. For some of you, it may just be one particular school, or you could have, you know, two, if you, or even three, depending on where your children are at. At that point, at this point, that's all you need to do is at least register, and we encourage everybody to register. If you do not have access to a computer, things will be coming down that will allow alternative methods for you to participate in the survey. But I think because it's something that we've never, ever done before, it's completely confidential, but it just really involves community engagement, family engagement, teacher engagement, student engagement. Obviously, we have a, a lot to do here, and there's, it's crucial that we work together as a team, and this is just one small piece. We can't fix everything if we do not know where the issues are. And once we know the issues, we need to find the root of those problems. So again, if you have the time, please register to become part of the survey. And I thank Mr. Nembroke for taking on this endeavor and allowing us the opportunity to further improve our school district. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mrs. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to first thank Buzz, Mr. Nembroke, sorry, for his presentation and for the transparency that he brings to the table, not only for us, but for the public. I think that's very important. A couple of other things, I recently attended two meetings. One was a district forum meeting for the Mass Association of School Committees. I have some information here for everybody on the panel. It was, and the other was an educational roundtable in Southbridge. The district forum, Mass Association of School Committee meeting was interesting because it was held at Algonquin Regional High School, and even though the demographics of our districts were very different of those that were participating, there were common issues to all of us. And that was interesting to see from my perspective as a new school committee member, that sometimes I think, you know, Southbridge this and Southbridge that, and we suffer from collective low self-esteem. And the issues that we have, believe it or not, are common with Northborough and Southborough, who are building million-dollar homes in a lot of cases. So I think that was good and worthwhile to attend that. The educational roundtable that was held on April third was also very interesting. I'll be curious to see how that report's written up. But one of the things that came out of that, one of the things that I had mentioned, was that I wish we owned our own bus fleet, right? That was part of my Powerball plan, didn't work out, but I was going to buy the district buses. And Mr. LaFlesh, the superintendent of Bay Path, came out in the hall as I was leaving, and he said, you know, Mrs. McLaughlin, we don't own all our buses, but we own three of them. And with those buses, we're able to send the kids on field trips without the additional expense, we're able to do athletics, the three buses do bus runs, in addition to serving those purposes. And he said, you know, maybe you can't buy three, but maybe you can make it a plan to buy one. I just thought that's something we should maybe consider or plan for in the future. I also just had a general question or comment. I know that recently, we've thanked people publicly, Dr. Tu, Dr. and Mrs. Tumalo for their recent donation, also Mrs. Santilli and the classes, the combined classes of Mary Wells and Coal Trade. But I'm wondering if we as a group send thank you notes? I think it would be nice to send a thank you note. I didn't know if you'd done that, if that's something that...
I haven't yet, but I was thinking about that this evening.
Great.
That we all get a bunch of them, and then for each person, for each group, I will send one out.
Thank you for that. And finally, Rosa, thank you for your comments earlier, I really appreciate it. I just, I wasn't planning necessarily to talk about this in depth, and I'm not going to, but part of what we found during the parent forums with discipline, particularly at the middle high school, and I think we actually heard it tonight from the two women that spoke, it was inconsistent. You have pockets of people who believe that discipline up at the school is so heavy-handed, and then you have pockets that believe that nothing's being done. and then you have pockets that believe that nothing's being done. I don't know how to reconcile that. I don't make any suggestions whether that's true or not, but that's clearly a perception that's happening up there. And so I hope when Buzz shares this with the district leadership team, that's something that can be talked about. Why is there such a discrepancy in people who believe that kids are getting away with murder and the other ones thinking that they're being treated a heavy hand? So I'm hoping that that's something that can be addressed. And that's it, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, our next agenda is executive session. Vote to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining for union and non-union personnel or litigation to the extent that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the governmental body pursuant to Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Part III. Do I have a motion?
No more.
Motion by Mrs. Principay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Donovan. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mr. Lazzo?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Dr. O'Leary?
Yes.
Mrs. Principay?
Yes.
Mrs. Woodruff?
Yes.
Dr. Domingo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. We'll return to open session for adjournment only.